Okay, at six thirty, so let's get on the start of the meeting. All the visitors are here for the Tipton Community School September meeting. I ask Mr. Dust and Blaise to make a note.
By political allegiance, to the light of the United States of America, we do agree that we are a just nation, a nation under God, indivisible, as liberty and justice is law.
Thank you, sir. Now, the agenda is, you can see the agenda items, and that includes tonight's agenda. The approval of fines for the regular session of August the eleventh, approval of claims for August the fourteenth, 2020, August the twenty-eighth, 2020, accounts payable claims. We're going to vote on the personnel report, but I will read that after, so everybody knows who is on it. We have an open interest in doing donations, a motion to accept consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The personnel report, we have no certified staff this month. Classified staff, medical leave, Holly Holden requesting medical leave beginning August the eleventh and returning in approximately sixteen weeks. Transfer of Jade Anderson from instructional assistant to computer assistant. Elizabeth Defoe, transfer from preschool assistant to Title I instructional assistant. Recognition by Corbin Nelson, special education assistant at the elementary. Emma Emmy Winter, instructional assistant at the elementary. Grace Clifford, library assistant at the high school. Randall Hudson, boys and girls bus route. Cindy Gillum, school nurse at the Tipton Middle School. And we have resignation of Sharon Pearson, instructional assistant at the middle, at the elementary school. David Addison, second shift assistant at the middle school. Annie Dohler, instructional assistant at the elementary school. Corbin Nelson, instructional assistant at the elementary school. Hannah Boswell, instructional assistant at the high school. ECA staff, Amanda Plake, junior class sponsor, has re, has a recommendation. Resignation, Trent Wellbaum, the assistant football coach at Tipton Middle School. Kyle Davis, seventh grade girls' basketball coach at Tipton Middle School. And next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, annually, we have to go, we have to present the, the ratings of our certified employees. That's part of the Indiana code. So these are the actual, um, ratings for our staff for the 2020 school, or 2019, 2020 school year. We had sixty-seven percent rated highly effective. That is eighty-one of our staff. Effective was thirty-one percent, and that is thirty-seven members of our staff. Improving necessary, two percent, roughly about two members of our staff. So again, this is just something that is an annual report to the board, so that they are made aware of the ratings of our, of our staff as part of their annual evaluation And we do have, I want to take this opportunity to thank our, our committee. We, we were able to have our committee meet and make some adjustments to our appraisal plan to make it compliant within the state. Essentially, legislature passed a, a, a new law that takes the standardized tests out of the evaluation for teachers. Our current appraisal plan did have an evaluation component that was based on standardized testing, so we took that out, met with the committee and had some discussion. So essentially, these are the, the changes in Indiana code that, that will affect this, these changes. And, and again, these are, again, this is what has got to be a part of the evaluation process, so the plan must include rigorous measures of effectiveness, including observations and other performance indicators. Plans must include annual designation and a four category. Just some general information, I'm not going to read the whole slide to you. Again, just some general information. So what we were able to do with our evaluation system, our appraisal system, was to essentially create two categories versus, well, actually, one category versus the two categories. So essentially, what we did in essence was to take out the, the SLOs, the school-wide, the school-wide evalu, the school-wide grade that was part of the assessment, and we also took out the professional growth, not professional growth, but the growth model data from the current evaluation. So essentially, what we did is we established some, some different guidelines. So those different guidelines are essentially doing one long observation for teachers that are in the professional or established category. They also will have four walkthroughs that will be collected, and this will all be part of their summative evaluation. If I am a probationary teacher, which means I am in my first three years, I will have two long observations and also the four walkthroughs. So essentially, there, essentially, this is just pretty straight ahead on, on, on what the process would look like. They have four walkthroughs, one per nine weeks, long observations of at least forty minutes. And if, if there's, you know, concerns, they can always have more than one long observation, but again, that is the minimum of one per year with written feedback. Again, definitions of what a long observation are, and the long observations, again, they're forty minutes long. We do ask that the teachers participate in a pre-observation meeting and then a post-conference meeting where they're having conversation with the evaluator about the process. We do have the formal walkthroughs, which is, for the last few years, there have been walkthroughs, but they've not necessarily been part of the summative evaluation. The difference is, these walkthroughs will be part of the summative. The long observations are actually scheduled, the walkthroughs are not. So again, that's, that's just kind of the gist of this process. Talking a little bit about the different levels of, of, of teachers, again, and also talking about the different domains within the rubric that we're looking at, that has not changed. Again, in, in general, the summative rating formula, there's, there's one or more long observations plus four or more formal walkthroughs, and then that equals one hundred percent of the summative evaluation. So this does put us into compliance with, with the state. It does take out the, the iLearn components of, of the evaluation process. And I believe that the committee is going to continue to meet, and we are looking at making perhaps some additional changes in the evaluation process as we move forward. So that is, in general, what's going on in the land of, of observations. Any questions on that?
Sure.
Okay.
I've been on board for eleven months, and the concern has been raised both by board members and community members that our previous systems have resulted in too many teachers being rated highly effective. Do you think this new appraisal system will help rectify that and better identify who are highly effective as a way not to diminish their efforts?
I, I'm not sure that what we, what we have right now will really get us to, to that point, but I think what we're going to work on from this point forward, very well could, this was really just a, an opportunity to get us compliant with the law, and we didn't really make a lot of changes to the overall process. Again, it's, you know, it's, I think that there's, on both sides, I think that there's some want to change and to, to make the process better, and so I think that that's something that we will do collaboratively. So I think that the future will be a little bit maybe stronger, document a little bit, a better process all the way around, but this one is probably not going to rectify that.
Yeah, thanks.
I also... I did want to take the opportunity to let everybody know that we are using e-tickets for football and basketball this year, and you should be getting some information about those e-tickets. Again, this is a way for us to, to keep social distancing going and to essentially create a situation where we're not handing tickets to people. So information about those e-tickets will be coming out. Additionally, what's really great about the e-tickets is it does allow us to manage the number of people that are at our events, particularly those, those high-attended activities like football and basketball. So there will be some limits on the number of people that we can have in the stands, and these e-tickets will help us to manage that just a little bit better. The, I do want to thank our teachers for, and really all of our, our folks that are just doing a great job this year, working harder than they probably ever worked and wearing a lot of different hats, more than they've ever had to. And as I was walking the building today, it's just amazing to see, you know, the, the efforts that are put forth to make sure that our kids are, are safe, they're, they're doing what they need to do, and our kids are great just by, you know, complying and doing what needs to happen. It was great to watch the high school kids, and that's where I was for the most part of my morning. I think they were just glad to see each other, so it was just kind of a, a nice event to, to get to watch. Lunch was a little weird, but we figured it out, but, but again, the kids are just great, and so I just want to make sure that we give them a good pat on the back. And it, again, I thought the first day in person went really well, and I just think that we have a great team, we have a great crew of, of people that are just doing a great job, so I really want to commend all of those people for making some great things happen every day. One of the discussions that we've had with the TDA is we want to begin to, we want to form a committee to look at the high school schedule, so I would like to have a couple of board members as a part of that committee. So if you have an interest, please let me know, and, and I think that that would be, again, good to get some, some, a lot of different feedback about how we've been able to move forward.
This is working now. All right, next is department reports. The board members have had a moment to review what was over, have any questions?
Would you be taking action on specifically the character of operations, the classrooms that require us to patrol across the highways and require special...
Next on the agenda is the financial report.
As you can see, we've ended the month with a cash balance in the education fund of two-hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-six, cash balance within debt service of nine-hundred-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-one-forty-seven, and a, also, a cash balance in the operations fund of one-point-eight million. And so, it'd be also, it is important for us to know that, essentially, year-to-date, we have actually spent three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars more than what we've taken in, in the education fund. We are aware of that, having to do transfers from the rainy day fund. But again, this was based on the idea of not transferring as much over from the education fund to the operations fund.
Next on the agenda is another. Long-term business, considering to approve more policies on the second reading, the policies related to COVID-19 were considered last month on first reading. Policies are based on the state guidelines, and it is recommended that the board approve the policy on the second reading. Motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is new business. First thing is consideration to approve the Tipton Community School Corporation transportation handbook, the transportation handbook for contracted corporation bus drivers outlining some of the basic procedures for school transportation. Mr. Russell has reviewed and updated the transportation handbook and is recommending a change. This change is regarding additional mitigation practices on school transportation due to COVID-19. It is recommended that the board approve the change, the transportation handbook gets presented, I guess we have any question on that portion of the schedule? And a, a motion to approve? So...
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is consideration to approve the Tipton Community School Corporation ride guide. The ride guide is the handrail for students and their parents outlining some of the basic procedures for riding the school bus. Mr. Russell has reviewed the ride guide and is recommending a change in the ride guide. This change is regarding additional mitigation practices on school transportation. Do you have any questions?
One thing I can see that was changed was just adding the COVID stuff, huh? All right.
It is recommended that the board approve the change on the ride, in the ride guide, and a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is consideration to approve bus routes for 2020, 2021. Each year, the bus routes that are used by the school corporation are reviewed and changed as students move in and out of the school corporation. SEAT two provides that a school bus driver must load or unload an elementary student at a location on a U.S. or state route. The superintendent must present the school bus route to the school board for approval. Mr. Russell reports that the Tipton Community School Corporation has three pickup and drop-off locations in the fifth half of the criteria. First one is bus twenty-six at forty-five-seventy, state route twenty-eight. Bus number five, eleven-ten, south, state route two-thirteen. Bus number two, thirty-three, fifteen, south, state route nineteen. It is recommended that the board, the school trustees approve the bus routes for 2020, 2021, as presented. Motion. So... Second. Motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Considerations to give permission to advertise the 2020 budget, 2020, 2021 budget, the 2021 budget, CPF plan, and bus replacement plan are shared in the board agreement work session on prior to this meeting. This request will allow us to advertise the time in public areas given, of course, October twenty-second, 2020, or then consider approval of the budget at the October thirteenth school date. It is recommended to give permission to advertise the 2020, 2021 budget, CPF plan, and bus replacement plan. Motion to the... So... A motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve the new Title IX policies on the first reading, July twenty-twenty, new policy is like Title IX non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities was made available for renewal. This policy is an update in addition to twenty, or nineteen-seventy-two Title IX law. This update is primarily for elementary and secondary schools as well as post-secondary institutions, and how they must respond to allegations of sexual harassment consistent with Title IX's prohibition against sexual and sex discrimination. This policy puts Tipton Community School Corporation in compliance with the new federal law. It is recommended that these policies be approved on the first reading, approval of the second reading will take place in the next one. Any other questions? Motion to approve? Second. A motion to the second to the period, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration to approve the re-adoption of policy thirty-two-twenty-point-zero-one regarding teacher appreciation grades. Each school corporation must re-adapt policy regarding distribution of teacher appreciation grades. This policy has been changed from last year. It is recommended that the board re-adapt policy thirty-two-twenty-one. So, does this change at all with the new appraisal changes that we have on the...
It's essentially, just says that we have a plan that fits the law, and so we have to submit this to the board with our approval and make sure that we're compliant with the law.
Second. A motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration to approve Tipton Community School Corporation's certified personnel appraisal plan. House enrolled Act Ten of Two, twenty-twenty was amended, men's existing in the Indiana Code twenty-dash-twenty-eight, point eleven-point-five-dash-four are a new requirement that student assessment results in the statewide standardized assessments used as part of a certified employee's behavioral evaluation performance. In the Indiana Code twenty-dash-twenty-eight, dash eleven-point-five-dash-four still requires school corporations to develop a plan for annual performance evaluations for each certified employee. The evaluation committee met, revised our appraisal plan, and recommended compliance with the state law. It is recommended that the board, the trustees, agree. The school corporation's certified personnel appraisal plan has written. Any questions? Any motion to approve? So... Second. A motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration to approve a resolution demanding a monthly transfer of funds in order to increase the fund balance in the education fund. The accompanying resolution allows for a reduced monthly transfer. The resolution will allow for as much as five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to stay in the education fund and prevent the need to transfer from the rainy day fund. This can only be achieved since our cash balance in the operation fund is healthy and is not a long-term solution. It is recommended that the board, trustees, and previous revision has written. Anybody have any questions? So... A motion to the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Other matters to the board?
I've got a question. I like Dr. Blaise's comment about the virtual tickets. I think that's a great idea. Is there any criteria as to how these will be distributed, such as is it first come, first served, parents, athletes, how will that be done?
We're rolling, we're rolling those out to parents first, and, and then we will, we roll them out to students and then employees, and so we're trying to be very careful in the way that we roll them out. We, we've spoken with the health department, and we feel like that eight-hundred is probably the max for football. We truly feel like it will be, you know, we'll be able to take care of everybody who wants a ticket, under that number. So, but first, we'll, we'll, we'll roll those out to parents and, and give parents that first shot, and then we'll, we'll kind of know where we are as far as a number after that, as to who's going to win the hell's.
Do we have to keep any for visiting fans?
The eight-hundred does not include visiting fans. They have two-hundred-and-fifty that they can have, and that they have already allocated, and so they will just use the same portal to purchase their tickets. So that, that eight-hundred does not include the away for...
Advisory committee is coming up next Monday, it's personal committee, October nineteenth, and some fairer fields, and remember the sixteen facilities in technology. Scheduled events today is the first day of returning person learning. Next Monday is the e-learning professional development day, eighteen count, which I guess has been postponed, September twenty-second is the eleventh, I did hearing as we discussed earlier. Next on the meeting is October thirteenth. Next on the agenda is comments from the community.
This is Kyo.
Thank you. I just have a question, not for Dr. Blaise, but for the board, please. I understand that the high school schedule is being looked at again. I'm starting to feel like I'm in the movie Groundhog State. Every two years, this comes up. Every two years, the high school staff is asked to pull together information, to put this information together, to present it to the board. And for the past two rounds, and I feel like I've been through this six rounds since I've been at the high school, but for the past two rounds, I have specifically asked my building administrators to tell me what the goal of evaluating the schedule is. What are we looking for? What is it we want to achieve? And I've never been able to get a clear and definitive answer, so I'm asking the board, as we are looking at the high school schedule again, what are we looking for? What do we want to achieve?
I can talk to that a little bit, I guess.
Thank you.
There's lots of things we're looking at with the schedule, but one thing is we're wanting to be able to share school, first chair of teachers between the school buildings, or maybe even with Tri-Central, talked about that. Now it's getting a little more crucial with finances, with declining the student population. We may, whatever, I mean, if it doesn't save us any money to change the schedule, we probably won't change the schedule, but if there is savings there, we've got to look at that. So anybody else want to chime in on that as well?
I remember when Block Four was established, because I was still working in the elementary, and I know what I know about Block Four from those days. I don't know anything really about it today, so I'm interested to know what the pros are, what the cons are, and where we balance out. You know, I've been a big proponent of saying, "I'm tired of cuts being happening at the elementary school." We've got to look across the board, including administration, including every building. What's the best practice for two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and what's the most cost-effective, the most affordable?
I can tell you right now, my biggest goal in this is maximizing what we have, what we can offer the students and to the staff, is we have to maximize the opportunities that we have available, and if changing the schedule is going to do that, then that's what we need to do. It's not that we're asking the teachers to take on a new responsibility here, it's we want to maximize everything that we have that we can offer.
I would say, for me, Block Four is intended to be taught differently. The structure of the classroom needs to be unique, and that, and that's what makes Block Four so powerful. Data tells me, as I've found... Data tells me, as I found, and you ought to forgive me, I wasn't prepared to quote any of this. Tells us that without active professional development, teachers naturally resort back to their traditional teaching method, which is a traditional seven or eight schedule. The challenge that we have is we hear both ends of the spectrum. We hear about the few teachers who are doing well, who are killing it in the classroom, right? They're creating the curriculum, they're using Block Four, they should be. And then we hear the other end of that spectrum of the abusers, of ones who are not teaching effectively to the Block Four schedule. The challenge is, I don't hear anybody else in the middle, and that's where most of the staff, I think, exists. So I think the exploratory portion of this is trying to explore where do most of these teachers fit? Are they actively utilizing Block Four? Is this intended to be taught or are they not? And I think the result will be, if they're not, then it's clear that we're not going to use it as effectively as it should be, and therefore we're going to switch.
Will this be followed up by evaluations of the middle school and the elementary school schedules?
Oh, I believe so, yeah. Absolutely. It's not a witchhopper after.
I would say as a parent, my, I've had, now my fourth child went through Block Four. They loved it. They still love it. They were well-prepared. One that did not attend college, two that do attend, and our fourth, I hope, will attend. It's been very effective, but I'm just a small sample. I also know that, as I recall, we're one of maybe eight schools in the state that still use Block Four. So that tells me what happened. Twenty years ago, that was the wave, and then that wave went away, and we're still there. And I told Anna Godely, that's one of the reasons some kids won't and parents won't move here is because, well, it's hard to transfer in from traditional seven or eight into Block Four. I don't know if that's true, but I know we have done studies in the past and it came out resoundingly in favor of staying with Block Four just three or four years ago. So I think we have a new superintendent, we have new board members coming in this fall for next year, and it's probably time to evaluate.
If you would, please allow me, I want to make sure that I have my notes correct. The goals that I've heard were we're looking at shared staff between the high school and middle school and the shared staff between Titten High School and Tri-Central. That was one of the goals mentioned, possibly, is to evaluate that possibility. To look at the possibility of saving money, which of course is translated into ripping staff. Do we have too many English teachers for the number of students we have taking English classes? So am I interpreting this correctly?
Correct, and signed from Matt.
We're looking at maximizing the opportunities for the students here in our building. We want to see an evaluation of the pros and cons of the block schedule. We need to look at that data that is showing how many teachers are reverting back to the traditional seven day period teaching style. And after doing this with the high school, we are then going to also evaluate the schedules at both the middle school and the elementary school over many of these same topics. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is Cole.
Got to make a decision.
You're on the clock.
Okay.
You're on the clock.
Oh, we have a clock now?
Three minutes.
Yeah. Okay, so, well, after what she just said and what all you just said, that was changing my direction of my thinking. All right, and I can't even remember my original thing. So I can't remember it. Let's go with addressing some of the goals that she just brought up. The sharing staff, are you aware of the fact that we shared middle school and high school staff last year and we are currently doing it this year? Okay, so you are aware of that.
Right.
Okay, so it's already a goal. All right. And the, Keegan, I believe you said effectively using class time per Block Four. But in all honesty, it really doesn't matter what schedule you're on. You have teachers that effectively use class time and you have teachers that use it less effectively. So in all honesty, your problem doesn't lie with your schedule, but it lies in the fact that either you have teachers doing their job exceptionally well, or you have them doing it mediocre, or you have them not doing it as well. So it doesn't matter what the schedule is, whether it's eight three day, seven three day, Block Eight or Block Four. Really, the concern is how, what kind of jobs are your teachers doing?
Yeah, I think, I think it could be summarized, that's the logic it could be taking. I think the challenge of Block Four, the lecture time of Block Four compared to a traditional schedule, lecture time would monopolize most of a traditional schedule. Where it should monopolize most of a Block Four schedule, as I understand it. So just trying to, again, as I talked to individuals who were part of implementing this, the Titten Community High School challenges, without that professional development happening. Having even the new teachers coming into a Block Four schedule know how to manage and operate a classroom effectively. Of course, that's probably the golden star of Block Four classroom, Miss Cole. I can't argue with you and that you don't affect me because I do, that's in the contrary. So it's really just trying to get a better assessment of, maybe it's a result of if we, as a school corporation, invested in professional development. Maybe we can see better effects in the classroom or outcomes in the classroom. But those are questions we don't have answers to because I don't think we've done that kind of assessment on, again, that middle group of folks to figure out how are they, man, achieving the classroom effectively or ineffective.
As the, as the goals that you presented, you know, you took notes on. I think another, another one that would be worthy of consideration would be the transition to college. Or not, or not transit, not going to college, either way. As a professor also, I teach at I U K, as many of you know. And your average class time up there is an hour and fifteen minutes. And prior to this year, because of our COVID schedule, prior to this year, classes in high school were an hour and twenty minutes. Okay, so our students going through learn very effectively how to handle an hour and twenty minutes. As a professor at I U K, I sit there and I watch at about the twenty minute mark. I have kids getting up and walking out the room because they got to go take a break because they can't sit and concentrate for a full hour and fifteen minutes. Which is five minutes shorter classes at I U K than here, but it's five minutes difference. And so for those students that transition to, say, an I U K versus a Purdue or an I U. Contacting some of those in the evaluation process and asking them how well, not how well prepared them academically, how well it program them to make the transition from a high school classroom to a college classroom. So another area to add maybe to your goals. So, all right.
Mr. Cochran.
Just, I won't need my timer. This is all of our first pandemic together, so again, I just wanted to tell everybody, good job, right? Getting our, I think, our kids safely back to the four day schedule, protecting the teachers, having the middle of the week for deep cleaning and the weekends. I think it's, I think it's great. As a parent, I just wanted to tell you thank you for being pragmatic, thoughtful, how we started the year, what we're evolving into. I think it's a model for other places to look at, and I'm very proud of the work that you've done and getting it done by the data with input from people. Just a, just a great job. My closing comment would be, I work in M and A, a lot of merger and acquisition business, and I've never seen a good company cut their way to profitability. I come here to all these meetings and it's just cut and reevaluating this. I think we need a board, then maybe new members that are coming in that are pro-growth, that want to compete for these students, that want to put the very best agricultural program in five or six counties around us. We're sitting with some of the greatest seed corn companies around here, and I don't think we're leveraging that enough. So my hope would be, as we go forward into this, that we can start talking about growth and competing for these students versus just cutting away at things, hoping at some point we're going to get to a place where the numbers tell us we're never going to get to. We're losing the students. So we're going to have draconian cuts and we're still going to miss the mark. And you can run that data. It's there. So my hope would be bringing more STEM, more ag, things like that into our curriculums, whether it's four block or seven or whatever it is that you end up doing. That we would, we would take a competitive mindset and that people would want to come here regardless of what our scheduling is, but because we have the very best programs and we're putting out the very best students. So again, great job. Keep up the good work. I'm a huge fan of all of these administrations. Just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have saved you for last.
Pardon me?
We should have saved you for last.
Yeah.
Never hit that. They usually get me out of the way first.
Matt Keegan.
Definitely should have saved you last.
How are you? Yeah, he should have been last. No. I just had a couple of questions. One, I've paced myself, so you guys should be nice. I've waited a few months before I started asking questions. But to Dr. Blase, as you can tell from coming in, I don't think you're, shouldn't have been blindsided when you got here. We have struggled with student retention. And I would like, I would like to pick your brain. I agree with Rob, you know. We have some major seed corn companies, all, our ag program, ag ran right is the best STEM program you can get going. And honestly, with what we have in our county, our ag program should be a beaming light. And not, and I've discussed this with other board members, I'm not saying, it's not, there's more to the ag program than corn, soybeans, and cows, right? There's, it's an extensive program, but we just, we never get into that. So I would like to know your opinion of what you think or your vision, okay? Of where you want to see the corporation go, to where we can try to draw these kids in. Because I agree, we should be, we should have people wanting, we have a good community, it's full of good people. A lot of people come, you know, they like the people here, but what are we going to do to attract when we have, we have a lot of competition, especially South? And so my question is about your vision for that. And the other thing I brought up, that was, I was listening to all this about the block schedule that I was thinking about. Hopefully, when we start looking at realigning and restructuring different things. To what Keegan was talking about, you brought up in your slide, right? So out of all our staff, only two were ineffective. Sixty-seven percent were highly effective. So if what, if what's being said on the backside of that is that we're not utilizing all this stuff, then maybe our evaluation and our overall grading of our staff isn't really aligning with the results that we're actually getting. And I think that's important, not just in the, you know, how, how, how our administrators are leading, how they're evaluating, because you can't, I mean, we had ninety-eight percent as effective or highly effective. But then we turn around and say, well, we're getting these shortcomings in different areas. So those numbers can't even be close to where we're actually at, and I think that's something that needs to be looked into.
I'll answer your first question about really vision for the district. I think that there's a lot of great things happening in T T community schools right now. And I think, A, we need to do a little bit better job of promoting what we do really well. And I don't think that that's something that's been done. So we offer a lot of programming that most schools our size don't. So I feel like that it's, I feel like that that is a real bonus, honestly. In most, in most schools, you know, if you were going to go into a wood class or go into intro to construction, you would have to go someplace else. We're doing that here in our building. We're offering some, some, you know, classes, again, that, you know, we don't have to send kids out to go be a part of, and I think that that's a real bonus. But again, you know, we're talking about doing some, some great, you know, some great things with ag. And we're talking about the greenhouse and where Mr. Westall is taking the lead on that. And we're working on getting that greenhouse up and going with some community members. And, and again, that's a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity for ag business. It's a great opportunity for all kinds of interdisciplinary, you know, approaches. When you're talking botany and you're talking all kinds of different areas. So again, a great, a great, a great opportunity. But again, we also want to be, we want to be good at everything. The thing is, and I fully believe this, I think T T community schools has done a great job of really educating the whole kid. You know, it's, it's, you know, we have strong forming arts programs, we have strong art programs, we have all kinds of really great opportunities for our kids. So they don't have to fit into a specific niche in order to be successful. Again, we have to do a better job of promoting. It's hard right now, you know, it's going to take a community effort for us to grow. Again, there's not the available housing, there's not, you know, again, there's, you know, it's, you know, I think there are people that want to live in this community. They just really can't find an affordable house to live in this community. And I think that that's a key to our growth, and that's a conversation that the mayor and I constantly have. And I think that the school can help in that, and I think the, and I also think the city can help with that. And, and again, you know, we have to be, it is about mindset, and you're right. You know, we do dwell a little bit on, on the ugly side of declining enrollment. Tried not to make a big deal about it this year because I honestly think it is more about COVID than what it is about a declining enrollment. I think it's more about, we have a really high percentage of kids that just aren't going to school. They're just, you know, parents have decided to homeschool them or to do whatever due to COVID. And I, and I do believe that those kids will come back, and I hope that they will. So when I'm, when I'm looking at a, an overall programming for T T community schools, I wanted to teach the whole kid, and I want us to be good at that. I want us to provide opportunities for kids that they can, they can learn, they can be, they can really find their interest and fall in love with it. And, and get that broad sampling, and maybe that's something they choose in adult life, maybe it's not. But again, having that opportunity is really important. And so I just think that we have to remain focused on, on, you know, it, you know, it's about STEM, it can be about ag, it can be about a lot of different things. We just can't put it all in one basket because we have to make sure we're taking care of all the kids. As far as the evaluation, to be honest, that's not something that I really jumped into a whole lot this year. I'll be really honest, I did not know the percentages until I made the slide about a week ago. And, and again, it's not because I, it's not because that's not important, it's just because it's not been something that we've had really an opportunity to look at. What I did know is there is, with the T E A and with the group that we have, they, they want, they want this to be a great document. They want this to be something that we can all be very proud of, and they want to make some changes. And in fact, I probably had to kind of hold them back a little bit because I, I didn't really want to make big changes this year because I, there's just too much going on. So I think that, I think we can all work together to make the document better. Again, I also think that it's, it's hard to be an evaluator. And, you know, and it's hard to make those decisions when you're sitting there evaluating or observing, observing a teacher. It's, it's easy to say that from the outside looking in, but when you're in that room, it's a little bit different. And, and I think that there's, you know, the system that we have makes it a really big deal for a teacher to be rated highly effective. And in my opinion, over incentivized, highly effective. Now, you want to reward your teachers that are highly effective? Absolutely. But it can't be to the point of really making the whole other categories very loss sight. But it can't be to the point of, um, of really making the whole other categories very lopsided. Um, I have a personal belief that really only about ten percent of your staff should be rated highly effective. And I am going to tell you from the district I left, this was a problem, and I will tell you from the district that I left before that, it was a problem. It, you know, but again, it's, it's, it, we, we want to reward teachers because of, of the environment that we are in right now, and we want to try to give them as much money as we possibly can, because we know that it's, you know, again, it's just, you're not going to get rich being a teacher, but again, these are all the things that play into this process. So, um, I would like to see us take a good, strong look at what it means to be highly effective. I would like for us to take a good, strong look at, um, you know, what we're basing that on. Um, I think that evaluator and reliability is super important. So, you know, if you have, you know, two people doing the same observation, but they come up with the same score, I think that that's important to note, and those are the kinds of practices that I think we need to do in order to make ourselves better. And, uh, so, that is kind of off the top of my head, kind of my, my opinion on, on that. Again, it's, um, it's not as easy as it looks, and, uh, but definitely, I think your collaboration, we can make it all better.
Susan Slough.
Not really a question, I just wanted to also state that I feel like the kids all coming back together has made a world of difference. My middle schooler came home and was so happy, I couldn't even believe her stabbing about being at school today. And it really came down to being able to sit at lunch with her friends and talk to them, because prior to today, she felt like she was leaving alone. She couldn't talk to anybody. So, I definitely congratulate you guys on the job you've done for you to be back in school. That was definitely good. The other thing I have a question about is the mental health of these students. Are we following that? Are we adding extra counseling for some of these kids? Because this whole COVID thing has got everybody down and down, so I just wonder if that's something that the school is really pushing to add extra counseling for these kids.
I think that we're always looking to, to provide that, you know, that extra support for kids. I know specifically in the elementary, that they have a curriculum design that, that they're implementing and, and looking at. Um, and, and the secondary buildings, again, you know, I think that that's also, you know, also being looked at, and maybe not so much in a holistic program, but maybe individually. Um, and, and the other side of that too is, and we had this conversation today, as we were talking about professional development, you know, our, our teachers also need that too. It's a very stressful time for them as well. Um, and, and I think that, um, between the, you know, the students and the, and the teachers, I, again, the more we can do to, to calm people down and to present them with the facts, and, you know, try to, try to make sense of all of this is, is really the most important thing that we can do. And, uh, so, you know, again, yes, I mean, the social and emotional health of our kids and our teachers are at the foremost, and what we're all trying to do right now.
I'd like to share too, Susan. I had a conversation with I U Health and, uh, Fort County. Both organizations aware of trying to create programming specific to the mental health. I'm not engaging in it more specifically, but I brought the idea of something that catered more toward children, uh, school-aged children. So, nothing's obviously planned, nothing's been created yet, but conversations are happening even from the bigger institutions who recognize the challenges. So hopefully, through those partners, something could be rolled out here shortly.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I've reached out to Fort County as a parent, and they're well-aware. My kids are terribly depressed. This has been, I, I can't imagine anything worse for them. So, I know that they're, they're aware, and they're wanting to come up with programs for kids all the way across the spectrum.
Well, Andy, do you have any clarification?
I do. Um, you may have three to four new board members coming on, like, January first, on this high school evaluation committee. Are you going to go ahead and form it now, without any new people, or are you going to wait for them? For the new ones to come on.
Well, we're, we're really going to form it now, uh, because we, unfortunately, um, there's just not a lot of time, and this is something that we want to, you know, if we do decide to make a change, we want to give plenty of time to allow for that change. Um, so, again, we're talking a couple of board members, um, that will be part of that committee, and then teachers, obviously, and, and other, other folks. So, um, you know, the board will be a part of that, you know, with the two. Um, but again, I think that it's, you know, it's important for us to get going now versus waiting till after January.
All right. If anybody has anything else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, a motion to adjourn. Uh, thank you.